Okay, it's six o'clock, it's time to call, call to order the Mount Pleasant Municipal Planning Commission meeting tonight. At this time, I'd ask everybody to stand, please, remove your hat and get Ted Howes to do the indication for us, please. And Ms. Granberg, you do the pledge.
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this evening. We thank you for allowing us to be here. Father, we pray that decisions made here tonight is in the best interest of the citizens of Mount Pleasant and also for the city of Mount Pleasant. Father, we pray that you be with these in this room on the way home and safe travels. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Let the minutes reflect, we do have enough here for a meeting tonight. At this time, number three is approval of agenda tonight.
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion.
You said you wrote, I don't know.
I don't do it at this meeting.
Okay.
I have a motion for approval of agenda.
Oh, second, I know that was here, okay.
A second, all those in favor?
Uh-huh.
Oppose, motion carries. Approval of minutes prior to meeting, January 11th, 2022, make a motion for approval of minutes. I have a motion.
Second.
And a second, all those in favor?
Uh-huh.
Oppose, motion carries. Number five, I'll turn this over to you, Rodney. That approves?
Thanks on the agenda, this is what approval, FP041222, first thing, FP1, applicant David and Teresa Gerard had submitted a final flat property located 606 Florida Avenue and being further identified on tax map 133 H. Parco 020.00 and on file at Mary County Sheriff's Department. You could have the flat in front of you all and show where they are splitting this property up into two lots.
Yes.
So Rodney, on the notes here, it says the lot one does not meet the minimum lot width requirement for?
For the 50 foot frontage on the end of the block.
What distances are we talking about?
On the, the pro frontage, for the front 50, 50 yard or 50 feet is the width of the front lots.
So it complies everywhere else, just the front?
Yes, the, the width of this lot does not comply with the 50 foot.
And so it says the existing house, so is it going down to lot two and they're splitting it up in lot one?
The, the applicant stated they was tearing down the house.
Okay.
So they want to build a house on each lot?
Yes.
It meets all the setbacks and everything?
Yes. It is owned R3 district now. Over house that are wanting to tear down that house that's on the existing lot now, I can make two lots.
Make two lots, huh?
Yes.
And I assume the she has been taken out as well?
Yes.
But other than the road, Rodney, she has nothing else meets our requirements?
Yes.
Hey, Ms. Kenfro, that's a fine, glad you still with it. We need an extra bullet. We're stepping in.
What, what is the, your department's stand on this, other than the requirements of the?
The department's standpoint on that is, you know, as spoken in the comments, it doesn't meet the road credit for that lot.
Outside of that, everything else does?
Yes.
Correct. Would that create any other issues that we know of with the frontage?
Yeah, but will anybody else meet under that?
Yeah.
That would, yes, there would be different aspects of that as far as somebody else wanting to rezone something.
We talked to Cory about whether or not this would go to the BZA for a variance?
Then why not?
Cory? Cory, are you there? Okay. I was just asking if this would need to go to the BZA for a variance because it doesn't meet the requirements. That's just a question.
It should. Yeah, it should.
I mean, I don't think we can approve it without it going to the BZA because we don't have that right because we have denied others.
Yeah, we can approve a side plan. We can.
I mean, I mean the lot, making it too lot.
Mr. Cherry, if you don't mind, I want you to let me speak. These are engineered.
Okay, I'm saying.
Yes.
Go ahead, Will.
Yeah, this is a little bit odd. We, we noticed the deviation from the zoning requirements when we reviewed the flat and we asked Rodney, have they made application to BZA for a variance? And what are the conditions around that? And we haven't heard from them about such application. Ms. Granberg, you're correct, you don't have the ability to grant a variance here in this circumstance. And the plat as drawn would create a substandard lot. So you've got a few options, you could done the plat based on, you could additionally approve the plat, asking them to correct the lot size because if the house is going away, they could shift that white line and, and probably meet the, the requirements. My assumption was that they were trying to keep the house and create another lot, and that's why they shifted it that way. But people, Rodney, that's probably not the case. So if you did approve the lot, you'd be creating a substandard lot, which could cause problems down the road. It just leaves the inconsistency.
So it could be shifted a little and be meeting our?
Yeah, we're only short eight feet. The next, the next lot is 58 feet wide. So it seems like if they are planning to remove the house, they could shift that line unless there's something that we can't see here on the plat that's preventing it. And we didn't hear back from them.
Is that on our applicant hearing this evening?
I don't see him.
Is he in? Come here.
Other option would be to defer it. We have a time limit on reviewing flats. I can figure it out in that.
So we could see if they could bring something back that was shifting a little bit?
Seems like it's, it can be done, but are they doing this for a reason or something?
Anyone, is anyone here to speak on this matter in loud as tonight?
Cory, do you have any thoughts on this?
She's trying, I think.
Is there a volume? Should be loud and clear.
She's muted.
Pardon?
She is muted.
But she unmuted and tried. Yeah, she's tried.
I know in the past we've had problems like this. She called in, provided a problem with the zoom side.
He's unmuted again, yeah.
But if we're going to defer it, we'll get all that information from her.
Yeah.
By the way, going forward.
I make a motion that we defer it.
I have a motion to defer it.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Uh-huh.
Oppose, motion carries to defer it. Two J, two.
I know, isn't that crazy?
All right, item number six, rezoning request.
For you tonight, PC01, or 041222, RZ1, applicant Bella has submitted a rezone request for properties located in the Southport Road and Rain Street, being further identified on the tax map 133 N. Parco 020.00, 028.02, 028.00, and on file at Mary County Sheriff's Department. The request is to rezone all lots from R1 low density to R3 high density. I have provided maps for everybody.
Yeah.
If you all could reference.
I'm sure we have people here to speak on this tonight.
So the whole, all this to R3?
The, the, the parcels that are outlined in red.
Looks like 128.
Exactly 125.67.
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't know about that. Well, I didn't count that, so, but.
And the applicant, the applicant is on Zoom, Mr. Seth Martin is on Zoom. If you have any questions.
Do you have anything to say to us?
Sorry, I was on mute there.
Go ahead.
I didn't, I didn't hear.
No, I was just hoping you were gonna tell us a little bit about you were asking us for and stuff.
Yeah, so just, you know, residential development there, you know, single family lots. I think the, the, the plan kind of spelled out, you know, just typical, you know, single family higher density lot, like you're kind of seeing, getting developed everywhere now. I know that we've done a lot of preliminary due diligence on this, including, I know that there's a sewer, you know, that is a little bit far away to get to the main. We're looking at, I actually came in and spoke with some of the state representatives a few weeks, or I guess a couple months ago, actually, regarding actually expanding that sewer line back down to Rain Street to help with the pathy there, or is it Rain Street? Rain is not Rain Street, correct?
Yes, Rain Street.
Rain Street.
Right. And just kind of helping, you know, grow that area of Mount Pleasant there.
What's the, I know we got several people probably signed up for this here tonight, so.
Yeah, I'd like to hear your opinion, Will.
Yeah, you first, Will.
Yeah, so, Mr. Martin mentioned this is the R3 zoning district they're asking for. That's your highest density zoning by right that's allowed. The intent of the R3 district when we rewrote the zoning ordinance was that it would be focused around the downtown businesses to kind of support those commercial interests with higher density of housing, more people nearby that can walk to and from those businesses. It wasn't really anticipated that R3 would give the other side of railroad tracks, especially in this amount. So those are some of the notes that, that we shared with Rodney, just to kind of highlight what was intended with the R3 districts. Remember, it does allow for single family, 5,000 square foot lot minimums, but it also allows for multi-family and downtowns. So you've got variety of housing options. Are there any other questions?
So on R1 already, it's for a single dwelling as well, right?
Yeah, R1 and strictly single.
And that's what this is right now, is R1?
Yeah.
I mean, that is really.
I'm kind of confused because, I mean, this is so early.
Well, in terms of at the pro lot, it might be close to downtown, but if you think about how you actually get there, there's, there's one point of access across the railroad track. It's not a condition that's really conducive for walking back and forth and high and high connectivity, which is kind of what we were thinking about when you consider giving that much leniency to R3 zones in the future. But that's, that's for you all to make.
But you're not gonna be able to build nothing this size inside and close to the city.
I'm sorry, what?
To be R3, I mean.
Yeah, a lot of R3 downtown. And you've got areas that could redevelop that are underutilized currently, near downtown, just north of downtown area. That's just, just want to give you a little bit of background of when we drafted the R3 district, kind of what was in mind there, but it's your role to make a recommendation and City Commission to.
And I kid really quick, the R3 zoning, when we looked at, you know, Mount Pleasant's code, it really wasn't so much about density for us. It was really more about the lot size requirements. And I think when we came in and spoke with Mr. Archibald and I believe Rodney was there, original meetings, you know, we're, we're even open to, you know, go to the pud route or, or, you know, somewhere where a planned, planned development. I think it's really just about kind of a first shot, taking a look at what this is. And, you know, we don't really have any intentions to come in there and do, you know, high density town homes or anything of that nature. It's just more of a effectiveness for development in today's development world. As we've seen, everyone kind of knows costs are starting to get absolutely ridiculous. And to kind of keep progress, one of the biggest things that we've looked at as developers is just how will we minimize, you know, development costs? And, and that really is through lot widths and, and things like that. So when we, when we look at the R1 zoning, the lot widths there were what really kind of pushed us where we're trying to go to the R3. It wasn't so much about density.
Part of this land down towards Rainy Street, I mean, you know, we was told that it couldn't be developed nowhere. That's just why they didn't develop, they divided that section up down there that was left as a donation for a park. And I mean, this is a lot to make R3 up there in this area. And I'm not for it.
I would remind you that, that you've got public hearings for this tonight and several people have probably signed up, so you might want to shift over it.
Okay, we will, we will. Thank you, Will. Appreciate it. I'll open it up to anyone who wants to address this that we're discussing now.
Should you just go down the list?
On the rezoning, okay, number one, Kate Collier.
Here, I don't know if this microphone is working or not. I don't know if the people in back have any trouble hearing. I'm much louder than Will. Cory, are you on board now with your icon?
Yes, Kate, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay, before Kate speaks, she is speaking today as a citizen. We don't think she has any sort of conflict of interest because she is, she doesn't have control over the Planning Commission or will hater. The only person in this room that she would have any influence ever would be Rodney. And so she really works for the Planning Commission. So with that, that, go ahead.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, as, as stated, Kate Collier, my address, I live with my husband Wayne at 1004 Mill Pond Road, and we are immediately adjacent to this proposed development. And I wanted to say that I am all for housing. I, you've heard me say, we need housing in Mount Pleasant. And my opinion is this land is properly zoned as R1. Back, most of you know, back in 2018, the 30-plus-year-old zoning ordinance and zoning maps were redone. A lot of thought was given to those, public hearings, lots of input from the public, and it was changed from agriculture to R1, which is really the equivalent zoning now, the lowest density possible. And I, I feel like all the thought and effort that went into that, if you looked at that property 36-plus years ago, it was agriculture, now it's R1. And so I think it was properly zoned back then, and I think it's properly zoned now. I think that, we all know that the decision to change any zoning has to be done with findings of fact using our zoning ordinance. That's what you as a, a commission have to take a look at. And the first of that findings of fact is the amendment is in agreement with the land use plan for the area. And I would say that the amendment is not in line with the land use plan. I think the land use plan is correct as R1. The second is there's no adverse effect upon adjoining property owners unless such effect can be justified by the overwhelming public good or welfare. And I believe there is an adverse effect on the adjoining property owners with this type of density. And no property or small group of property owners would benefit materially. The only material benefit I could see would possibly be with the developer. And then the conditions affecting the area have changed to a sufficient extent to warrant an amendment to the area's land use plan and subsequently the zoning map. And I do not believe any of that has happened to change our zoning map. And Mr. Martin made a point of why they were maybe looking for this type of zoning with not necessarily density. But you all know, if you rezone this and it's sold, you're subject to that density, no matter what that next developer may, developer may want to do. So I think it's, I think that there was a lot of thought and effort by the powers that be and most of you in this room that created the maps and the current zoning ordinance. And I think it's exactly the way we want it to be. I remember saying over and over again, this is a rural community. We want to keep that rural feel. And I think he just said, this is what everybody's wanting to do. We don't want to be a Columbia, and we don't want to have the density that a lot of those have. So that's my personal feeling on why I feel like R1 is appropriate and I look for there, for there to be houses there. Thanks.
Thank you. Joe Miller?
You didn't go with your address.
I'm Joe Miller and I live at 1066 Mill Pond Road. And I've been there since 1998, built my house in 2003. And I would be the closest to that particular development, really. If you come out the end of my driveway and walk 20 feet and cross the fence, I'm on it. So it's, it's gonna affect me from a noise standpoint. As far as the R1 zone, I agree with everything that Kate says. I would be in favor of that. And I would be in favor of it not being changed. I'd like to see some tasteful housing if we're gonna have neighbors built out there. And I also think that, that the city should not undertake any expense in their budget for the, the infrastructure you require for sewage water, that type of stuff. I would be against spending money for, for that. Let the developer, if he's gonna develop it, spend it. And I would have concerns on the roads, though Southport Road and Hoover Mason is now approaching to my property in the backside of Hoover Mason. It can't take any traffic. It's, it's in bad repair right now. So I would be against the zoning change. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a Dorothy Porter?
I'm out of rope there. I thought that was a sign in sheet.
Oh.
I am. I'm not, I'm.
You're not.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, we have a George, George Slade?
You know, I appreciate it. Miss Collier has pretty much taken care of all that. I mean, we're totally against R3 because there's only one way out there, and that's Southport. You can't go around Hoover Mason.
What's your address? Sorry.
1036.
Thank you.
Mill Pond Road. Thank you. I think you should go over there.
Jackson Ross?
1056 Mill Pond Road. My thoughts and opinions have been shared as well.
Very good. Michael Stevarts?
Yeah, 1034 Mill Pond, but same, my concern has been addressed. I'm also opposed to rezoning for R3.
It's a 1034? I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
I just recently.
Is this Barbara? Puller, puller, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry. I seen you come in. Brady Walker?
No, I'm here. Thank you.
Edward Jones?
My wife put my name down. I wish she hadn't done it.
I ain't seen him in years.
You know, I received, we received a letter through the mail that it's going to be rezoned. We're just curious about, well, not it is, and if you are, what's going to be there? I would, I'm gonna sell it in the dark. So, you know.
I understand. Good to see you. Been a long time.
Hey, what's your address?
What's your address?
110, Ray.
I have a Jim Robertson?
1016 Mill Pond Road. My only comment is, we see what R3 has done in Nashville, and I'm of the opinion that that's what we, what that's worth, I'm opposed to.
Very good. Ryan Sullivan?
Yes, 1012 Mill Pond Road. And I am opposed to the rezoning. And Jim and Kate have adequately expressed my concerns.
You got done your homework tonight, didn't you?
Yeah, Kate, you were on homework.
It's all about keeping it accountable.
Yes.
Atmosphere, I think, still.
That's everybody on the list. Rodney, you got anything else from your office?
No, sir.
Commissioners, when you are considering this, remember the 4.7 factors from your zoning ordinance. Try to keep your discussion within those factors, please.
There's our orange paper.
Where's our paper at?
We don't have our. Kitty, our orange paper, we're joking. She always has that for us. It's fine.
We don't have our tennis and sheets.
I've got your tennis and sheets in here. Samuel, I had it memorized by now.
Once a month, it's. Hadn't, hadn't met since Christmas.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, January, I think.
I saw that red.
I don't do red.
I don't either, actually. I am. I don't. I am. I don't.
I don't.
I don't.
I don't.
I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I mean, they sell the land and it's still R3, and we can't change it back then.
Any other discussion from the board? If not, I entertain a motion on this.
I make a motion due to the public input and history and the work that's been there and the conditions of the area that we don't make the change. that we don't make the change to R3. We leave it R1 at this time.
I have a motion?
I'll second it.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Uh.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries to deny.
I mean, it's probably important to let the owner know that this has to go before two readings.
Yes, this, what we would, with this being denied, it will have to go before the city commission two times.
Understood.
All right, we'll move on. Number seven, annexation, annexation requests.
There are none, Mr. Chair.
Number eight, site plan requests.
Yes, sir. We have a site plan, PC one oh, one oh four, one two, two two, SP one. African Scott Freeman has submitted a site plan for property located at one oh two Charles Sitcher Way, being further identified on tax map, one twenty-six, partial zero, four, one, point six, seven, and on file with Murray County Registered Deeds. This being proposed for the future build out of office space concerning the spec building. This is a spec building that just, just sold, this last one that we, we was all in partnership with, with the IDB.
Okay.
That just, they did just.
We're talking Cherry Glen.
Cherry Glen, yes, sir.
Who works in?
Uh, the.
Who? Is the project Brazil?
Yes, it is. It's in the project area.
It, it's not closed yet, but it's very close to closing.
There, there are some comments that was submitted. I will read them if y'all, you all would like me to.
You said it's a Brazil building in Cherry Glen?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It's probably Brazil.
Were, uh, to be approved.
There, they should, they, they, they are, they, they are two set of plans there. The first plan was submitted. We submitted them to our engineer on contract. There was some issues there. So the applicant has, we submitted the second set of plans that does not have the comment paper with it. That is the new set of plans with the revision that was suggested.
That's the one where they, they changed the landscaping from the nine foot to eighteen foot, and then noted the light posts and lighting. So they've met all the requirements?
Yes, sir.
And stuff? Is that the reason we have two of them in here?
Yes, sir. What, they first, they first, the first plan set was sent in, and we sent them to our engineer on staff. That was the comments that was suggested that they meet, and the new set of plans was brought in today. That's, there was included in this packet today.
Will, you have any comments on this?
No, Rodney did a great job.
All right, very good. Very good. I have a question. For two meetings, we skipped with just the same building. It was the lighting that was in question. It was recorded in the minutes from the last meeting.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Yeah, we wouldn't, they wouldn't be sure what was going in it because it was a spec building. Any, no one signed up for that. I know all the signups are gone. Anything else from the board? Not entertain a motion?
So the lighting is on the appropriate right now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so they did put it in. Okay. I'm sorry. I'm just making sure.
They corrected all the lists.
You were working there about last time.
Yeah, okay.
The lighting is at the luminous meeting room apartment as well as well.
Okay, I'm ready for it now. I was just introducing the last part for the lighting.
I have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we accept the site plan. Second?
Motion and the second. We have two seconds on it.
Everybody.
All those in favor?
Uh.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you guys. Sorry about the mess.
Okay, got one more here, site plan request.
This is the next item on the agenda, is PC zero, four, one, two, 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 SP two. African TKC Architect and Engineer LLC has submitted a site plan for property located at three oh two Locust Street and zero Warner Street, being further identified on tax map, one thirty-three J, parcels twenty-eight point zero and twenty-eight point zero three, and on file with Murray County Registered Deeds. This is proposed for future development of townhome and multifamily construction. The, I placed another packet in your, in the one-way study. We had talked about, I know we had talked about that at the last planning commission meeting. Mr. Carlson from MTS just sent this in today. That's the reason why I included it in the packet on the, tonight.
Oh, on it.
That'd be South Warner.
Yeah, we discussed that before.
Yes, that was a discussion point before.
What I do with mine, you take, you take a ten here. That's fine. Sure. That's fine. Well, very good.
I just wanted to show y'all that that, that has been brought to the attention of our city staff and everything. So we have that taken care of.
So that will go.
That will come back through you.
It'll be in front of you next month to make it one way. And then it would have to go to the city commission for two readings with an ordinance to make it one way. But I don't remember any time. We haven't followed their professional recommendation. We just have to have an engineer take a look at it. And obviously, we can get an engineer through MTS better, for a much better price than we could if we had a higher one.
I think it said it was a requirement of twenty foot, and Warner's only fifteen, six or five foot, and there wasn't one.
The applicant is present tonight. Do you have any questions for them?
So it's, so as far as your office, have they met all your?
Yes, sir.
Site plan?
Yes, sir.
Request?
Did they start, which way are we going?
Yes, it's going from First Avenue.
Are you talking direction?
No, I'm at the townhouse.
They will, they will be able to face Warner Street and Locust Street.
Okay.
With this, with this recommendation by MTS to make Warner.
One way. No, we still, this is all.
Here we did it, the way we.
Is the developer here?
Yes.
Yeah, let him speak on it. I know we discussed this before, and you had kind of turned to.
I think we have a relationship with him.
Well, we did. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Cole Moon, with TKC Architecture and Engineering. I'm a civil engineer here in town. But, um, yeah, we, yeah, we were here before y'all, I guess, in December, and then it's been, you know, taking its toll to get back. And, you know, I've met with Rodney and then met with Robert previously. And, you know, took y'all's concerns into account, and we, we designed it another couple different ways. We turned it with them facing north and facing south. And it ended, you know, we looked at the one-way study, and I think at the end of the day, we really feel like this is the best product for the city and impervious cover as well. I mean, turn it the other way, you're creating a road through there, and you're adding, you're adding additional impervious cover to a, to an area that, you know, stormwater is already a struggle everywhere.
True. That's true.
So, I mean, you know, we have it answering questions you have. We really feel like this is a good product.
And the center gives you a lot more green area.
Center gives you a lot more grass. I mean, if you turned it the other way, I think the impervious cover went to, you know, point three five acres, and we're at point two one. So another point, almost another quarter of an acre of impervious or so, or quarter of.
And the park, parking space in front of each one of them?
Well, they each have a garage.
Okay.
And they'll each have a parking space in front of it.
Okay, okay.
How is this being set up? Is it, who's like, who's mowing the grass and the maintenance?
It'll all be, so it'll be HOA when it comes in.
I thought we discussed that.
Yeah, but the next middle, which will come in with our surveyor, we're using four, use our surveyor, come in as a final plat. Next time y'all see it, it'll have a HOA document that'll go with it that'll, that'll govern the stormwater control, and it'll govern, who maintains that and to cut the grass.
Sounds great.
Okay.
Very good.
Thank you.
Oh, I appreciate you.
Any other discussion from the board?
No, my concerns was handled the one-way street and the way they turn. Appreciate it.
If not, I entertain a motion on this.
I make a motion that we accept the site plan and present it.
I have a motion, uh, second and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye carries. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank y'all. Thank everyone for attending.
Yes.
Number nine, old business.
There are none, the commission.
I, I do have some at this time. And last meeting we was in, me and another, a couple of us discussed this, this parking lot here. What is, where are we at on that?
We have received a letter of intent, our letter of credit just yesterday. So the construction should start pretty soon.
Of finishing this project.
Finishing this project, yes, sir.
They needed that to be able to do a certificate of occupancy on the last commercial space.
Right, because we had discussed before, and this is prior to Robert leaving, that we was gonna revoke the bond and so forth on it, and look at that, and so.
And it was for a hundred and fifty thousand? Does that sound right?
I would say it was like one ninety-eight, not one hundred percent. We just got that in last day or two.
Should anyone fail to do the work, we would pull that and.
We had discussed that in previous meeting, but just, just wanted to know where we're at on this.
So Rodney's allowed to give them an occupancy permit for six months, and then it revisit where the situation is at that point. And he can only do that because he has that letter of credit.
That, that letter of credit will come to you, to you all, to, if y'all, if you all want to extend that past the six months.
That's what.
If for some reason there is, you know, some kind of snags or, or construction woes.
Another's other.
We're talking about MPI?
Yes.
The letter of credit just gives surety that the money is there to complete the project.
Yeah.
But it doesn't necessarily mean that construction is starting right now. It is just an alternate way to have a guarantee that this parking lot is getting built.
Okay.
And that's in use of ordinance, and if we've also offered it to the block.
But Cory, are they saying, they're saying six months? It's good for six months?
It's, the letter of credit is actually good for a year, but your zoning ordinance says that Rodney can only issue a temporary occupancy permit with a letter of credit, six months at a time, and then he has to revisit it to make sure things are still going the way that the city is comfortable with.
Ain't that, ain't that what we talked about, uh, I think we talked about in December, not letting it go past six months?
And we did.
All the other things is.
We did.
I mean, you know, we're kind of between a rock and a hard place because this is going further than what we have met anybody else.
I mean.
And we'll get feedback on it.
I think that, that what Cory is saying, I'll let her speak to it, because that's specifically what the ordinance says. The process was.
Temporary certificate of occupancy. That's one time limit.
And I know we did offer that to the church as well, but that's an expensive undertaking to get the letter of credit, and they ended up finishing the lot instead.
But I mean, it's not just the church. It's what our code ordinance says.
Mm-hmm. That, that's what Cory is, is saying, that that is what it outlines. Cory, you want to get more specific on what exactly the code says? That there's, you know, just to, to give them a comfort level of what we can and can't do at this point?
Because we do have citizens of Mount Pleasant that's upset at us because, you know, they feel like we're playing favoritism and.
You got that right.
We try real hard not to do that up here.
Mm-hmm.
I mean.
Don't look like to me, nothing's being done. Ain't a shovel in the ground there or nothing else. I mean, of course, I know they had legal issues and stuff, but, I mean.
But is this saying that those things are worked out or no? No. This is just saying, we're able to give temporary, we're able to give occupancy to the space because they've proved that they have the money. And that's really all that's going on right here. And they understand that as well.
So what can we do legally in order to give them a deadline?
So the deadline is in your ordinance, and it is six months at a time. This is an alternate way to get occupancy permit. So this isn't, this is not playing favoritism because this is the same thing that we've offered to more than one applicant because the city's goal is to get the parking lots paved.
Right.
And so they have, y'all have this process in your zoning ordinance that lays out a way to give an occupancy permit and not basically kill a project if you can prove that it's going to get done. And the first, it's actually Rodney's office that makes the decision, and it's six months at a, no more than six months at a time, so.
When did they start them?
It's starting when they got the letter of credit.
That being?
Yesterday.
Yesterday.
Yesterday. So it was six months.
Amazing. Well, then, when we needed a letter, when we needed a letter of credit from Landmark, it took them nine months to get it.
So the occupancy, is that for the Hamilton Building?
Yes, sir. The last commercial structure that was being occupied on that side.
So this is driving out to the end of the year. But there's another business coming.
Be done by the end of the year. That's not what this is.
Well, that's what we want.
It doesn't look like it's being done at all.
Okay, is, is that not at the year they gotta come back and reapply?
After six months.
Six months. They only have occupancy for six months with this.
Getting really aggravating. But there's another business beside that, isn't that Hamilton Building? So there's two businesses in there, right?
Yes, sir.
So what's the guy that hasn't opened yet? What is he gonna, is he gonna have to file property due?
This is contagious.
If you want to see in your zoning ordinance what section it is, it is four point nine G, I think it goes.
Thank you, Cory. No, really, at this point, it's all good, and, I mean, we can't really, I mean. I think everybody's goal is to get the parking lot done. Yeah. This is the only way they could get occupancy. Yeah, and I, I mean, and that's great, but like, at some point, a parking lot needs to be done. Right. And, you know, they could start the parking lot, and then they're in litigation. We don't know what's gonna happen there.
I was on it, we was on understanding that a lot of the litigation had been teared up and.
I, I don't know. There. I've heard that.
Well, you know, not Rodney, but.
Robert?
Robert. Said, you know, a lot of that, they just loose ends that they had to tie up.
That's what we were told in December. Was it December?
December.
December we met. We've had people out here looking at the wall. I think we're gonna give a price on fixing it, but, you know, they're private owners, so we're not necessarily in the loop on.
Oh, I understand that.
It's, they're, I mean, I've gotten phone calls because people think the city owns a lot, and they keep asking when the city is gonna finish it.
Exactly.
It's not our lot to finish.
That's the name. That's what everybody says. You all have a choice. It's not our lot. But, I mean, for some reason, everybody thinks it belongs to the city.
So is it all, I keep going back to the building. So the gentleman that owns that building filed for the occupancy permit on that lot? Do they own that lot?
No, sir. He was contingent on parking for that business to be there.
Yeah, the site plan was approved because the parking was available across the street. And then right now, the parking's not available, but they want to occupy the space.
Yeah. So.
But then I need it.
If anything's, and you deny the permit, what happens?
Want to open next week, I think. Well, it only affects the business.
Just fix the business.
Business that's closed. And, and that, that's not what we want.
No. We want to go park it.
It's your house.
Parking the bank parking lot after hours.
That's bad. My dogs will get them.
That's, those dogs will eat them up.
Anyway, we, that's, that's, I just wanted to.
They just came and proved it without the issue.
Is it okay to park there? They've got a lot of it cordon dogs, and it's a big muddy mess. Yeah.
People have been parking over there, but I mean, I, I didn't know if it was legal or not.
It's private property, so, you know.
Yeah.
It's private property that's intended for us to park in. Yeah. Very confusing. But the good news is.
We got six months from today, then, right?
But really, that's all about the business, not about the parking lot. Correct. And so this hasn't done anything to move the parking lot forward. What it's done is allow the business. Yeah, it's got to decide if the business stays open without a parking lot. Yeah, and the business belongs to, well, they get, they lease that building to the business, so it's income to them. So they would want it to stay open too. Right. Okay. It's a difficult situation.
I'm telling you. I'm telling you, boy.
We love it.
All right, very good. That's what I need to know. All right, we got other business, number ten.
There it is. Thank you.
Eleven, board and staff comments?
Anything? Good job, Rodney.
I need to announce that I'm stepping down from the planning commission.
You can't do that.
No.
You just got here. You can't do that. We don't have time to do, we don't have time.
We defer. He's gonna, he's gonna be a full-time city employee. Oh, goodbye.
You're not taking the commission people off the commission for my employee.
Man.
Well, we enjoyed having you for a minute.
Thank you. I've enjoyed it.
But we will try and find somebody. We will try and find somebody of the same caliber and get somebody appointed right away.
Very good.
Rodney, you all good? All good. You having fun?
On the third. No, I got one, I got one thing I want to say too. And, and, and I do. You know, all of this that went on with Robert leaving and everything, I don't think a, a person on this board was notified.
Really?
That the changes are going to be made. Not that we have any control over it or anything.
No, you should have been notified though.
But was saying, you know, Rodney's going, you know, all I got was a letter of resignation from maybe Patty or someone like that on Robert's resignation recommending, recommending Rodney. I guess I got it because I was chairman, but outside of that, Rodney and I had a discussion too, that, you know, nobody was notified of anything.
You know, I think I would take the blame for that because the same thing is happening. Like I just sent an email out today about Ted. And, and sometimes you're in the know inside and you forget the other people outside need to be aware of what's going on. And we probably should have done a formal announcement.
Yeah, I heard it.
I congratulate him and, and, and kind, but you know, I, I felt it.
Yeah.
A board, you know.
Communication.
My neighbor told me he was on and I'm like, for real?
Communication and lack of communication is probably the problem. I apologize for that. It's certainly.
Not a problem.
Certainly not Rodney's, but should have given you a.
We just, we want to continue to do things right.
When Rodney came on board, it was always about succession planning. So if something happened and Robert did leave, we knew we had somebody that we could put in that slot. But this doesn't mean we should, we should have sent out a motion. Enough. We'll do, we'll do a better job of that.
Not a problem. Say your motion for a moment. Make a motion. Got a motion?
Yeah.
Second. Okay.